Good evening, everyone. I am Board Chairman Scott Lambert. At this time, I appreciate your patience in this delay with the technical aspect that we had on the Zoom. And I would like to call to order the October 10th, 2024 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. And please stand and rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our attendees here at the table. On my immediately right is Richard Orlo, Vice Chairman, and Peter Fixler, Supervisor. On my left, immediately next to me, is Bernadette Kearney, our Solicitor, and to her left is Steve Brown, our Township Manager. For those following at home, I'm going to jump around the agenda slightly. We'd like to start off with Board Briefings 2C regarding open space tax referendum. Kathryn, if you can lead us on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The major announcement on this for tonight, and I know there's been a lot of traction on Facebook and online with this, so we appreciate that residents are actively talking about this initiative. We do have a ballot referendum that's scheduled for the November 5th general election where residents will be asked if they favor the imposition of a tax on both earned income and also real estate tax for the purposes of purchasing and preserving open space in the township. We have a very significant FAQ on the township website. It's posted to, it's pinned to the front page. There's lots of commonly asked questions that are answered there. My contact information is also listed if any residents have any questions on this initiative.
Thank you. And in addition, there is an open space committee that was formed during the summer, and one of the residents who are on that committee is here in attendance tonight and would like to make a few comments. So Tim Phelps, if you could come forward and grab the mic.
So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the supervisors this evening. My name is Tim Phelps, and I am proud to say that I live, work, and play in East Whiteland. I've prepared some remarks for today about the open space referendum. I've called this community home for 24 years, serving on the Parks and Recreation Board for now for about eight years, and I co-chair the open space study. As a small business employer in the township, I have experienced firsthand the evolution of our community, and I'm here to advocate for something I believe deeply in, and that is preserving open space. Now, I understand that residents are often cautious about tax initiatives, and it is reasonable to feel and have concern about any new tax or fee coming down the road. People want assurance that this is not just a scheme. Let me start by addressing that concern. The open space referendum is not a vague or unchecked proposal. It has a clear purpose and comes with guidelines under the Pennsylvania law. The funds generated for this financial tool are to be designated for open space preservation, and that clarity should be, should give, that this clarity should give all of us some peace of mind. If passed, what this proposal, proposed referendum does is allow the township to bond funds, enable us to act decisively when land becomes available, competing at fair market value to secure spaces before they disappear. And what could those spaces become? Imagine protected areas where family can hike, where children can explore nature, and where communities can gather. These open spaces offer immense ecological, recreational, and social benefits. They enhance our quality of life and preserve the natural beauty that brought many of us here in the first place. This leads me to an important concept: smart growth. The idea is simple. We continue to develop and redevelop the township, we must be strategic. Once land is developed, it is forever transformed. It is extreme, it is extreme cost and burden to undo a strip mall or an industrial complex, and it will never be returned to its natural state. The preservation of open space is one of the most lasting investments we can make in our township, ensuring that future generations will inherit something more than just roads and buildings. The benefits of open space are well documented. According to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, DVRPC, protected land helps improve air quality and water quality, reduces flood risk, and increases property values. In fact, studies show that communities with robust open space protections also see a return in investment as property values rise and local economies strengthen. What many people may not realize is that it actually costs more to develop land than to preserve it. In 2019, a study by the Chester County Planning Commission evaluated the economic value of protected open space and found a striking disparity in the cost of services between developed and preserved land. For every dollar received in tax revenue, local governments in Chester County spend an average of $1.11 on services to support residential developments. That's police and fire protection, road maintenance, sewer systems, and new schools. By contrast, open space costs a mere seven cents for every dollar in tax revenue. This means that preserving open space isn't just about safeguarding our environment or creating recreational areas, it's a smart financial decision. Investing in open space is a cost-effective way to ensure long-term economic stability while offering residents a high quality of life through natural beauty and recreational opportunities. This is just not an investment in land, it's an investment in the health, well-being, and prosperity of the community as a whole. This open space referendum transcends party lines. It's about protecting what makes our township special. It establishes a funding mechanism that supports a live-work-play policy, fostering a balanced growth and ensuring that future generations will benefit from the same natural beauty and recreational opportunities that we enjoy today. I urge every resident to visit the township's website and read through the information on the open space referendum. Look at the facts, review the data from sources like DVRPC and Natural Lands Trust, and consider what kind of future you want for East Whiteland. As a community, we have the opportunity to secure something lasting, something that can never be replaced once it's gone. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the board for your continued efforts to keep our township a wonderful place to call home. Let us preserve this legacy, not just for ourselves, but for generations that will follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Moving back into the agenda schedule, start off with 2A for those following. The executive session was held, a executive session was held today at 4:30, in which we discussed legal, personnel, and real estate issues. Kathryn, can you give us just a brief update, if any, on the grant applications?
For this month, there's no new applications or no new awards, so just a summary that we're standing still roughly at $11.8 million total in grant awards.
Just $11 million?
.8.
Who's counting? Next up on the Zoom call is an update for our Parks and Rec Director, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
He's there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So, big update was that we had our first ever Community Day this past Sunday, October 6th, here in East Whiteland Township. It was a beautiful day, the weather was just fantastic, and really helped pull this entire event together. We saw easily 500-plus people attend throughout the five hours that we had the event. I want to give a few huge thank yous to some of the people that made it possible. First and foremost, police and fire and Public Works Department for working overtime and double duty to pull this all together. Thank you so much for volunteering and pulling this all with me. Last, but next, I want to thank our music stage and artists, Lolly Hopwood, all of us there, and then Ben Arnold and his 48-hour orchestra. We had over 20-plus craft vendors, businesses, and community partners, not at least including you all, the board supervisors here at East Whiteland, the Chester County Antique Car Club. We had a presence from Senator Ruth and Representative Howard. And last but not least, GBCO and their caring hands volunteers were incredibly helpful and really helped bring this entire event together, and everyone just complimented them immensely on everything that they did. Finally, wanted to thank WorkSpace for their valued partnership in allowing us to use their lands for this event, and also for Commonwealth Charter Academy for letting us use their school parking lot for overflow parking. Hopefully, this is the first of many Community Day events, and I'm looking forward to only growing and getting bigger from years. So, that was kind of the main thing for the past month. But looking forward, we do have our Trump Retreat event coming up at the end of October, on October 26th. That's going to be from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., and we're working with a KTM parklot. It's going to be in the KTM parklot. And that's the main update for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Larry. And certainly on behalf of the board, we wanted to give a shout out to you for all your effort for Community Day. I know it was a big endeavor, and for the first event that's occurred here, you did a great job on it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions? I bet you we do, Kath.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Stoffra, 64 Fawn Stock Road, and congratulations, because I think that was a beautiful event. I do have a question, and it has to do with our events happening in East Whiteland and the monument billboard that's on 29 and 30. And I thought part of that was that we could post our events on that billboard. I thought that was part of the deal of it being there, and the other part of that is there going to be a East Whiteland Township sign on that billboard. But congratulations, because that's, Community Day is very exciting, so.
I guess I'll answer one part of that, is that the sign caused a lot of confusion with people with phone calls, thinking that the sign was owned by East Whiteland Township, which is not the case. So, at the time, we decided to have it removed, but at the same time, we're in the process of redesigning the logo, so I think we'll probably revisit whether a sign will go up there or not. Second part, I will ask Zach to comment.
I didn't even know it was a full moon. So, specific to the advertising of township events, I've been working with the owner and operator of those signs, including the one over here on more along 202, to kind of sort through some of those aspects. We feel that we do have the right to advertise, we just need to make sure that we get out in front of that and get plenty of notice and coordinate with their artwork team and their content team. So I think, I think going forward, you'll see more of that, specific times and things like that. We'll just have to coordinate that on an event-by-event basis.
I can add a little more. To speak specifically to this Community Day event, I think I reached out just a little too late to coordinate with our team as Zach had mentioned. And one other thank you, I want to give a huge shout out to Assistant Township Manager Kathryn Ricardo. She is integral in this community together, so just a quick plug for her as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, apparently there's some event coming in November that Steve would like to talk about.
Right, thank you, Scott. As most of us know, if not all of us know, we have a general election on November 5th, and the county is making an effort to get basic information out to the public. And I attended a meeting recently of Chester County managers of communities like myself that was attended by the Chester County District Attorney and the Director and Assistant Director of Voter Services. And they provided us with some important information that we have posted on our website, just basic information that has important dates, such as October 21st, which is the last day to register to vote. Again, I'll just repeat that, the last day to register to vote is October 21st. October 29th is the last day to apply for a mail ballot. Again, that's October 29th, last day to apply for a mail ballot. Then, of course, Election Day is November 5th. Completed mail ballots must be received by 8:00 p.m. on that day. And, of course, you can vote in person. Two of the precincts actually vote here in this building. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. The county has a lot of good information on their website. It has specimen ballots, satellite office locations, the calendar that I just kind of went through, other important dates, frequently asked questions, and a variety of helpful links. And I would urge you, if you have any questions, to take a look at their website. Unfortunately, one of the topics that was discussed at the meeting was one regarding possible voter intimidation and complaints regarding election. And the Chester County District Attorney made it very clear that if you see something, they want, or think you see something, they want you to report it, and they want people to call the 911 center. And you may say, well, geez, I'm not, why would I call that? It's not an emergency. The people receiving the calls have been specifically, or will be specifically, trained to hear what you have to say, ask you questions, and then they will route the call accordingly. Many of the concerns or complaints will not be a criminal matter at all, they'll simply be a civil matter, and someone from Voter Services may be dispatched to the precinct to investigate. So, again, if you see something, call 911. You can also talk to the judge of elections, who is on site that day. And I think that's it. So it's unfortunate, but that is important to mention, and it was, as I said, a topic of much discussion at that meeting. But again, if you have questions, I would urge you to look at the county website where there's a lot of information.
Any questions? Don, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Steve, want to continue with the budget meeting update, the dates?
Thank you. Yeah, last month, I announced that we would be holding two public budget meetings. We changed the date of the first one. The first one was originally Monday, October 21st. That has been changed to Wednesday, October 23rd, in this building, and we changed the time. So the time will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in this room. So again, our first public budget meeting will be here, October 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our second meeting remains unchanged. That's the following Monday, October 28th, again, in this building, in this room, noon to 4:00 p.m. This information will be posted on our website. It's important to note that those meetings are in-person only, there is no Zoom option for those meetings.
Thank you. Again, in conjunction with the upcoming election, another area that we end up encountering throughout the period before and after are election sign growth in the community. And Zach, can you give us an update on something positive that might come out of the excess amount of signs that are placed?
Sure. So we've been working with the county, and there's a handful of other locations to create a drop-off place for used, old, no longer needed election signs, rather than kind of leaving them along the roads, just kind of making a place for people to actually get rid of them. So we'll have a couple of drop bins that Public Works has pulled together, created from scratch, I might add, to have the plastic, the metal, et cetera, recycled properly. So we'll drop them off here, and we'll make sure that they're disposed of in the correct fashion.
Good, thank you. Moving on to board motions. As you know, we've got a vibrant group of people that are volunteers with a lot of different committees that we have in the township, and we rely on them quite heavily to assist us and to do a lot of heavy lifting. And recently, we've had a shortage of folks on the historical board, but we're happy at this point in time to have Greg Davis apply and be generally approved up until this point. So if we can ratify Greg Davis to be part of the historical board, Peter?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Greg Davis to the historical board with his term going from September 2024 to December 31st, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Next is ratifying the part-time firefighters. Greg, you can give us a little overview on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight to ask the board to ratify the appointment of three new part-time firefighter EMTs. First one is Daniel Caldwell, works full-time at the Goshen Fire Company. The second one is Matthew Davison, that works full-time at the Burrwind Fire Company, and Eric Colberg, that is full-time with Upper Marion Township Fire. It's the board to ratify.
Okay. Don, any questions? Okay. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to ratify the appointment of the part-time firefighter EMTs mentioned. Daniel Caldwell, Matthew Davison, and Eric Colberg.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. Kathryn, we've got an advertisement for traffic engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This RFP is related to the ongoing Route 30 improvements, design work that the township's undertaking, and is the next step in moving that project forward. So what this is, is an authorization to put out the request for proposals for the township traffic engineer for 2025 that conforms with PennDOT's Publication 93 standards. So this is, this differs from our current process, as the board is aware. Professional services, like engineering services, are not typically required to follow this formal of a process, but because the township has received substantial grant dollars and because of the limitations with some of those grant dollars, we are required to follow this process. So this will cover us in terms of as we move forward with meeting the minimum requirements with those grant agencies. So this would be applicable for 2025. So next month, you'll see those proposals, they'll be recommended and scored by a group of staff.
Okay. Any comments from the public Zoom? Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, I would like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement for the RFP for the Township Traffic Engineer.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And passes. Okay, on 3D, I'm going to pass this over to Bernadette Kearney regarding zoning hearing application.
Yes, this was on the agenda this evening as a motion to reconsider the opposition to the zoning hearing board application, 2024-02, which at last month's meeting, the board authorized two-to-one to send counsel to oppose the zoning hearing board application. Mr. Brosman, who represents the applicant, is present. The reason we had put this on the agenda again was because we have an extension letter dated September 12th from Mr. Brosman that the zoning hearing would have to be held by October 31st. I believe Mr. Brosman is going to indicate to us that another extension will be granted so that this motion can be on the November agenda. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Brosman to make sure that is correct.
Yes, good evening. I'm George Brosman, representing the applicant, and that is correct. Grant extension to zoning hearing board, running through the end, so we would.
So, just for the board and the audience's edification, right after this, we're going to have the Continued Conditional Use Hearing, which is also Mr. Brosman's client, which is very directly tied also to the zoning hearing board application. We wanted the board to be able to hear the continued testimony before making that decision on the, whether they wanted to reconsider that opposition. So at this time, my suggestion would be we table that, and we'll put it on the November agenda.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to table it? Rich?
Sure. Make a motion to table the motion to reconsider the opposition to the zoning hearing application, 2024-02 Penncrest Properties.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. And if you could just send a written letter to us tomorrow, that'd be great. Thank you.
3E, sort of along the same lines with the open space and early success. This is a authorization agreement. Kathryn, if you can give us pertaining to the Spring Ridge-Balderson Agreement that has been in the works for many, many years.
Yeah, so several months ago, the Board of Supervisors authorized execution of the Agreement of Sale for what we refer to as the Spring Ridge and Balderson parcels. And this is one of probably a few amendments to that Agreement of Sale you're going to see over the term before the township goes to settlement. Just one point of clarification, too, that's listed in the parentheses but is worth pointing out since you'll have multiple amendments going forward, is the board previously authorized amendment number one, but then it was further amended before it was executed. And so we're just bringing that back before you this evening. The substance of that amendment, just for the public's reference, was just a slight change to change the purchase price for the Balderson piece to be in line with what the grant award had been for that project. So it didn't, it does not require additional outlay of funds from the township beyond what was previously committed with the grants.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions of the public? Rich, would you like to make a motion if you don't have any questions? Peter, questions? Okay.
Sure. Motion to authorize the Spring Ridge-Balderson Agreement of Sale, amendment number one, further amended from the prior authorization.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
What do we think the realistic timing might be now with a closing?
It'll be in 2025. I think it's
Sure.
March, maybe? Yeah. We are meeting with the EPA pretty much every week. We're going to get this done.
Moving on, we would like to have one of our historical, soon-to-be-retired historical committee members, I believe, Nick Roach. committee members, I believe, Nick Roach, regarding some information about the AME Church stabilization project over off of Backton Hill Park Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board, for hearing our request this evening. And thank you also to Carla Mudry for keeping the church on our collective minds via Chester County ramblings. I'm sure many of the audience members have perused her writing. Also, thank you to the AME Church for their pledge to assist us and thank you to them for being here this evening. So we'll get started. Here you can see, I'll go through a couple of images showing the, unfortunately, deterioration of this church located on Backton Hill Road. It's an AME church. It was constructed circa 1830. And here you can see almost 110 years later, still standing strong, good roof on it, good walls on it. But, you know, as we progress to the next slide and the following, here you can see even 50 years later, the roof is still in place and because of that roof, the walls have been protected, the building still stands, and at this point, there's no real risk of any collapse. But the very next photo you'll see in around 2010, sorry, thanks, the roof's gone. And so this picture here is what makes me wish that my family and I had moved here a decade ago because I'd be here asking for a roof rather than for tuck pointing. As you can see, the roof in this image is gone and then as soon as, I think it's 2020 in the next slide, you'll see that we've started to see plants growing in the walls and actually creating, along with freeze thaw, further degradation of all of the masonry, particularly in the rear of the building. Fortunately, we still have the primary facade that faces Backton Hill with its, with its original gable. And so we need to act now. So moving on, the Historic Commission has contributed to the effort alongside the AME Church to prevent any major catastrophic losses in the, in the, in the way of taking down compromised trees that were located in close proximity to the, to the church. So our primary focus was avoiding any major destruction that might have happened should a tree fall on, on the building. We've taken that down. I've split many a quart of wood and donated it to community members. And in doing so, we eliminated that risk. We'd be remiss if we didn't mention with gratitude all those similar types of efforts of clearing that the late Al Terrell, Mr. Baker Fair, as well as not shown here, but Mr. Naring, all members of the Boy Scouts of America who have gone above and beyond the call of any citizen to keep the church in the state that it is today where you can at least see it and you can even see the gravestones that are, that surround it in the graveyard. And speaking of which, if we could go to the next slide, one of my primary concerns in this case is that we have Civil War veterans buried in this churchyard, directly adjacent to the building walls. And should these building walls collapse, these memorials are going to be buried under rubble, potentially never to be seen again. That's the concern that drives my effort with this, with this church stabilization. So let's move on. We've done what we need to do in that we've gone and received multiple bids to perform the work. As you look at these bids, you'll notice that there is a pretty significant discrepancy and I am going to speak to that. Our preferred contractor listed here at $14,100 to tuck point all of the walls inside and out, as well as to stabilize with pressure-treated lumber the walls until additional restoration can take place. Right now, we're trying to stabilize. In the future, we hope to restore. So Anthony Verderame is our preferred contractor. Our preferred contractor, if you'll, if you'll flip to the next slide, you'll see has over 38 years of experience performing brick pointing and tuck pointing and masonry work throughout Delaware County. And I have spoken with references. In particular, he received the glowing reference from the gentleman in Norbert. Here's his quote, "Jay from Norbert indicated that Anthony and his crew did amazing work on my home and he'd recommend it to any of his friends or family. In addition, I spoke with Jay about the fact that Anthony was very low in his bid." And Jay said, "That's exactly how it came in with us. He was significantly lower, significantly lower. We decided to take the risk and him taking that risk is our gain because as you'll see in the next slides, the work that Anthony does is second to none, in my opinion, as a licensed architect." We can just kind of roll right through these. You'll see the way that he struck these, I believe this is a Wissa Hiccup Schist, it's a nice rock, G-N-E-I-S-S. And one of the things that I'd like to call everybody's attention to is the way that he focuses on driving the mortar to the face of the, of the stone and striking for aesthetics the center part of that mortar. But the most important thing is that the mortar is flush with the stone, which prevents water infiltration, which means that it will stand the test of time. And we can just, there, there's a bunch of pictures. This is, by the way, these pictures, Jay was so satisfied with the work that he allowed me to come to his home and take these photographs myself. So I think that stands as a testament to the quality of work that Anthony does. And so we'll see some other photos shortly that demonstrate that not only does Anthony do private residences, he has worked for other historical organizations. This project in particular at Akahaking Preserve is similar stone to the stone that we'll be repairing at the church, both in look and in tuck pointing methodology. And so I think it's important that we see that and see the quality of work that he provides. And he is also, he also has experience with other religious institutions throughout the Delaware County. Here's Christ Church in Media P.A. I guess that's Montgomery County. No, it's Delaware. Correct me if I'm wrong. So in addition, Reverend Martin, who's here with me today, the leader of Mount Zion AME, has already pledged $3,000 to the restoration project. And at this point, our request of the East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors is additional funding of $11,100 to bring our total to the $14,100 that Anthony has bid. In addition, I'll conclude by saying that Mount Zion has already expressed the willingness to contract with Anthony so that it will be a private, well, a religious private institution contracting with a private licensed and insured contractor in Pennsylvania. That's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
A couple, couple of comments that I would like to make at this point in time is that I'd like to point out that this summer, we ended up having the historic marker ceremony on probably the hottest day of July that I think I've seen around here in a while, but it was a great ceremony. And I'll also point out, there are actually 80, 80 grave sites located in that location. And everyone's involvement, including the Historical Commission led by Jeff Dorr and, and Nick and everyone, including some of our residents, Kyle Mudry, has kept this in the front of, of everyone's plate for a period of time for a worthy cause. And thanks everyone for that. Rich, Peter, any comments or questions?
I repeat what you said and thank you, Nick, for spending your time and effort and expertise to this venture. And thanks for the members of the AME Church to contribute and to help out. We are, I'm sure, going to be very proud to help with this and make it happen.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Agreeing with both Scott and Rich, I agree with you too. I wish we could have only addressed this when there was still a roof on it and hopefully the work we could do now can do a lot to preserve.
Goal is ultimately to get back there. Thank you.
Okay. So Zach, you have a thought?
Yeah, just to, yeah, just to, well, I'd echo. I mean, I think it's, it's a great project and it's great work by everyone. I just wanted to make the, more of a procedural point, since it's an expenditure of funds, this will have to show up on a future agenda, but it sounds like the board is supportive. So likely on a upcoming, maybe a budget meeting or a future regularly scheduled meeting to actually authorize the expense.
Yeah, I would think you'll, you'll see it on next month's agenda and obviously I don't see any opposition at this point in time, but just following procedures.
Can we preliminarily do that and ratify next meeting or just give indication of our consent now with the next official action next meeting?
Certainly, it sounds like you're supportive. We could talk about that, maybe at the staff level. I don't know that I have a good answer for that, but, you know, there are times where we ratify things, you know, that have already been, that have already occurred. So we can huddle up on that. And if that's a possibility, I think that's something we could do and kind of keep the, keep the ball rolling.
What's, where's Nick? What's the timing of him being able to start?
I think that we can probably get him started within a month, once we have authorization. Yeah, ideally, we'd like to get him started before the, the depths of December, January. Not a good time to be tuck pointing.
So the official word is it will be on the next agenda for official vote. But again, you're seeing favoritism at this point in time, so act accordingly. Moving on to the main event. Public hearing, Bernadette will take over control. And just to be clear, the Board of Supervisors become an oddity in the municipal laws. We've become judges, not supervisors. So we have to change our hats and Bernadette will be running this portion of the agenda.
Yes, good evening. I am going to start the hearing with indicating that this notice is hereby given. I'm sorry, Maria, are you ready? We have a court reporter. Notice is hereby given that on October 10th, 2024, at 6:30 PM, at the East Whiteland Township Municipal Building, the Board of Supervisors of East Whiteland Township shall hold a continued public hearing on and may take action to vote upon the conditional use application of Penncrest Properties LLC, care of Matthew Lombardi. The applicant is requesting a conditional use pursuant to Section 200-58 Point J of the zoning ordinance, conditional uses for historic resources, which permits residences in mixed-use districts to adaptively reuse and rehabilitate the barn located on the property at 370 Lancaster Avenue as a mixed-use structure for a dairy bar ice cream shop with 55 attached residences to the rear of the barn. The property is located in the FC Frontage Commercial District and is designated a Class I Historic Resource. This is a continued hearing. Our normal night is October 9th, so we had to re-advertise because we were having this hearing tonight, October 10th. We had started the hearing on, on August 14th. It was continued to September 11th and further continued to October 10th. I'm going to mark a series of exhibits. We had been marking the township's exhibit. Last exhibit was T-18, the September 3rd, 2024 committah review letter. The next series of exhibits are T-19, the proof of publication for tonight's hearing, T-20, the letter notice to the neighbors for this hearing, T-21, the letter notice to the parties for this hearing, T-22, the affidavit of posting of the property for this hearing, T-23, the updated conditional use plan set by Inland Design dated September 25th, 2024, T-24, the October 4th, 2024 fire marshal comments, T-25, the October 8th, 2024 email from Zachary Barner, Director of Planning and Development, in reference to the estimated school age students, and T-26, the August 7th, 2024 memo from Zachary Barner, which was just an overview of the conditional use and zoning hearing boards application, which had been provided to the Board of Supervisors. I did forward the exhibits to both Mr. Brosman, the couns, the applicant's counsel, and Mr. Halligan, who is the, for lack of a better word, the township's attorney for this matter. At the last meeting in September, the Township Board of Supervisors did vote to have counsel represent the township ordinance, and that's what Mr. Halligan from Siena Law is here to do. So he will also be presenting witnesses this evening. I do have, one, two, three, four, five, six people who had asked for party status and I do see Glenn Cockerham in, in the audience, I do see him, Jeff Ottler, Gary DePaul, Joe Robino, Thomas Keys, and Sean Ryan had come to the first hearing in August. He didn't come to the second hearing. He was going to bring some information. If you recall, Mr. Brosman, he was here representing someone, but I, I didn't see him at the second hearing. I'm not sure if he's here or online, but I, I am aware that the part, there are parties in the audience and maybe online who are also present for this. And I believe Mr. Brosman is going to continue with some exhibits that he also has and some testimony, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Halligan. I did want to make one, note one item. We had received an email, Mr. Barner had received an email from a neighbor, was not provided to the Board of Supervisors. The neighbor was indicating, I apologize, I'm going to find it, is Carol Burke, and she has owned the land where the Kaltastic Diner is located since 2007 and prior to that, her parents owned the land. She is expressing concern about water drainage issues. She indicates, "I'm not able to physically attend the meeting, but why don't you be aware of my concerns? I'm not against the development of the land where the importer is located, but I need assurance that stormwater from the property will be handled." Again, George, I did not provide that to the board because we don't normally mark things of this nature as exhibits since the person is not here and not able to be cross-examined or questioned, but I did want to note it for the record. At this point, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Brosman.
Thank you, George Brosman. For the record, since the last hearing, we decided to take another look at the fire review letters that we had from the town consultants, and most of those comments are related to subdivision and landhold and ordinance provisions, which are not technically at issue at the conditional use hearing, but we decided to take a look at those again and asked Inland Design, Mr. Dobson, to make some revisions to the plan. There were no substantive revisions. Submitted those to the township, some revisions were made to address some of those comments and we submitted some response letters. So I would like to submit the plans into the record, which I see that Bernadette already did, but we have them as well, and the response letters. And I was going to call Chuck Dobson just to go over pretty briefly the revisions that were made and the substantive plans that were changed. Yeah, I'll call Chuck and then I have my exhibit packages that I can hand out. What we did was rather than do it piecemeal, we put a whole other, put the whole exhibit package back together. So we just have the, all the exhibits we've submitted previously and then in bold print, we have A-14, A through D, which are the response letters, A-15 revised plans. Thought it'd be more convenient to have them in one package. So I'll hand those out if that's okay.
George, can I just ask one question? I did get an email late in the day. It does say that A-15 is the revised plan set, but it says revised 9/25/24. I just want to make sure because it's hard to read. We, we both have the same thing because I think I said 9/26. It is 9/25?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I did say 9/25.
So Chuck, you heard my introduction, is that correct?
Yes.
Referring to the plans, which are now at the exhibit. 15, would you describe generally in highlighted fashion what was changed?
Certainly. So upon, you know, in order to make the application and plan set as complete as possible, we indicated we went back and took a second look and just to see what additional things we could modify to the plan, eliminate waivers and just demonstrate overall compliance of what we're trying to do. So the, the changes were pretty, pretty minimal and so they primarily had to deal with entrance driveway, the. The, and you saw the last hearing, showed a curb radius of 35 feet for the entrance driveway. That would require a waiver. We simply modified it to be 40 feet. With your ordinance. We also widened the throat of the entrance driveway to 20. Which is, in our experience, what the PennDOT is taking from the fire when we go through the HOP permitting process, PennDOT. We did add crosswalks across the entrance driveway and also internal to the site to really facilitate pedestrian connectivity from internal aspects of the site as well as walk along Lancaster Avenue. A project is actually realized. We provided some more detail to public space that is in front of the ice cream shop. And generally, we prepared a board showing some of elements that could be added to that. It really just in response to Mr. Halligan's comments about, hey, give us some additional detail about what you're thinking. Did that, but we also recognize that this is probably going to be further refined development plan and really dig into the details about what works, what doesn't work. I think it's important to note that the board we submitted provides elements, site elements, canopies, et cetera, that can not only be applicable to the public space outside as well as the public space apartment building.
Chuck, let me interrupt you just for the record. So that is in the packet at A-14. C, is that correct?
Yep, that's the one, the conceptual courtyard. And again, the idea was to provide some ideas about, you know, a variety of ways that we can incorporate elements into the plans better for the spaces that the set aside. I think the last thing that we did was, in response to the Township's Traffic Engineer, we went out and did some more analysis of site distance that's available at the driveway, Lancaster Avenue. Previous plan set had shown site distance that was available for drivers exiting amended that information. Approach site drivers on Lancaster Avenue. Westbound, left into the site. That's especially for the left turn movement site. Cars that have stopped have sufficient sites to react. Site. So we basically just added that information to the plan. Provide as much clarity. Everything else relative to architectural modification large tree preserved and fire access that
Proposed number of units that were reduced last time, the residence is, is that still at 55?
That is correct.
With regard to the site distance info that you mentioned, of course, that will be reviewed at land development and during the PennDOT process as well?
Yes, that's going to be heavily
And the subdivision and land development ordinance does require a submission of a traffic impact study at that time?
It does.
And then I had in my notes, we also removed the note about a waiver from the tree removal? Provisions of the subdivision and land development ordinance?
Yeah, that note was removed and primarily because at this point in time, it's a little I think I've testified previously that we are going to be preparing in buffer augmentation permit. And I also think that we are committed to doing a total location. The viable trees that may be possible, it may be such that we request the waiver.
And that will be on the, determined when you do the survey? And as required by the subdivision and land development ordinance, that will be submitted to the township?
Yes, and it's, you know, and as a practical matter, doing that tree survey now is a after the foliage of the tree.
That's all I have for Mr. Dobson at this time.
Clarification. I'm not sure I totally followed you pertaining to the outcome of the trees that we brought up and questioned, the two sycamores, the 31-inch one and the 51-inch. If you can clarify the status of those based on our previous meeting that we had?
Sure. So the large sycamore, which is located roughly south of the existing ruins, that cannot be saved. The slightly smaller 31-inch sycamore that's located really at the southwest corner of the property. We have made modifications to the architecture that we discussed at the last hearing, and our objective is to implement all of the construction guidelines that Chomper identified in her testimony to preserve the tree during, after construction. That has not changed. Certainly.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just one. You mentioned you looked at the site distance on Route 30 for people wanting to go left into the site. There is a center lane there, correct? So in theory, if anybody is to make a left turn, they should know they have to make it from the center lane, not the right lane.
Well, as I think of it, right, in your statement, if we get it out of their budget, it's caution because while we know what drivers are supposed to do, we all the times have to play ahead for what they're not going for what they're not going to do.
I have no questions.
Any of the parties who are present in the audience have any questions? I think that's Mr. Cockerham?
Yes.
Yes. We just have to have you use the microphone. Questions of the witness.
Make sure everybody can hear me. Can you all hear me? My big question. I took a ride down to all the properties today. I took another look at everything. It's more of a statement about this building site.
Well, Mr. Cockerham, yeah. We're only doing questions from Mr. Dobson right now. At the very end of the hearing, we'll do statements.
Well, I'll have a statement for you at the end of the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, I'll wait till then. I had, I looked at everything.
We're going to do parties first. Anybody, any of the other parties? No one online? Okay.
Hi, Kathleen Stauffer, 64 Fawn Stock Road.
She wasn't a part of you.
I'm just curious about how old the trees, the two sycamores? You talked about diameter, but how old are they? Ideas?
125 years old is the estimate on the 31-inch.
No true way to tell, Kathleen.
That sold again?
I want to be ahead of time, want to be ahead of time because
According to the testimony of their, of their tree expert, the second tree is, the 51-inch tree is 200 years old.
Civil war-ish.
Right, but Peter, Peter doesn't believe that.
I digress. There's, unless you cut it down, there's no way to tell. It's a guess unless you have historical evidence putting the tree at a certain place and certain time.
Just noted for the record, Peter is a
Certified arborist at the Morris Arboretum.
You have to come up to the microphone. We, we're Comments at the end, yes. Anyone else? Okay. And Mr. Brosman, did you have other witnesses?
I don't this evening. I'm hoping this might be it, but I would ask that my exhibits be made part of the record. Is there the right
Yeah.
Further issues come?
Absolutely. I don't think the board has any issues with the exhibits, but I will ask. We did note that A-1 through A-15 noting that A-7 was intentionally omitted. Does the board have any issues with the admittance of the?
I have none.
Anyone?
No issue.
So admitted. And then I'll ask Mr. Halligan if he is, I think he is presenting witnesses. And actually, Mr. Halligan, if you need the copy of Mr. Brosman's exhibits, I do have an extra copy for Okay.
Good evening. My name is James Halligan, H.A.L.L.I.G.A.N. I'm an attorney with Siena Law. I'm here on behalf of the Township District. And we do have three witnesses to present, if it pleases the board. We are first going to call Edward Van Arsdale.
Edward Van Arsdale. V.A.N.A.R.S.D.A.L.E. I do.
And may I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Van Arsdale.
Evening.
Mr. Van Arsdale, where are you employed?
I'm employed with Arrow Consulting Incorporated.
And what is your position there?
I'm a project manager and I also serve as the Township Engineer for East Whiteland Township.
And how long have you been an engineer?
I've been an engineer for 20 years.
And how long have you been a township engineer?
I've been the township engineer here since May of 2024.
And have you ever been qualified as an expert as a civil engineer?
I have.
And approached me how many times?
Two or three to my recollection.
And have you had an opportunity to review the sketch application for 370 Lancaster Avenue?
I have.
And did you generate a comment letter dated June, I'm sorry, July 17, 2024 with respect to that sketch plan application review?
It's good.
I believe if I mistake this, we are at Township Exhibit 26. This item is marked as Township Exhibit 27.
Why don't we mark yours E?
E?
Yeah, we'll start with E1 if it makes it easier.
That's fine.
Yeah.
This is E1. May I approach?
Yes. I'm sorry, can you tell me the date of that one again?
July 17, 2024.
It may have already been the, is this the July 17, 2024 Arrow Review Letter?
Yes.
Yeah, it's already marked as 10, T-10.
T-10, alright.
Yeah, but we'll continue to mark it as E1, that's fine.
Okay. So you're looking at T-10, E1. Is that your letter?
That is.
Okay. Can you please explain to the board what you did with regards to your review?
What we did is we reviewed the plans on a preliminary basis, understanding that this was just a conditional use application. We kind of gave some advisory comments as the plan would move forward into the subdivision and land development process. Just kind of giving some highlights for the benefit of the applicant and their engineers, things to think of moving forward.
And if this application moves forward to land development, subdivision and land development and zoning, will you have further comments at that time?
Yes.
If we can refer to this exhibit specifically, if you can explain your comments with regards to, I believe you indicated on page, the first page, Page 1, we'll call it, and Page 2 with regards to the sketch plan, can you please explain your comments?
Yes, absolutely. Again, our comments were if you give me a moment to review them here in front of me. Based upon the zoning of the property, we gave advisory comments as to things to look forward to with setbacks, encroachments, things with riparian buffers, wetlands, block coverage, impervious coverage, stormwater management requirements that would need to be met during the, as the plan moved forward.
And with specifically regards to your comments as to subdivision and land development, can you give a brief explanation to the board what your comments include?
Yes, they included, again, more advisory comments, understanding that the applicant would need to provide formal preliminary and final land development plans, more formal design information, conservation and environmental impact assessments, right-of-way lines, all of the site, existing site features that are there, and advisory comments on how much area of woodeds could be removed according to ordinance.
And with respect to zoning, did you have any comments that you could explain to the board?
The most, again, as we kind of went with the general sketch plans, things of setbacks, block coverage, things of that nature, and specifically alterations of historical resources and that they would need historical commission reviews as part of their process.
And with respect to stormwater management, could you please explain your comments to the board?
Again, yes, sure. These are just, again, advisory comments, understanding that formal stormwater computations, site layouts and profiles would need to be provided in part during the subdivision and land development process.
And in your conclusions on Pages 5, 6, I believe you're deferring the conditional use and special exceptions to the township for the decision with regards to that before you move forward with your more formal comments, is that correct?
That is correct.
With regards to this review that you've, this preliminary review that you've done, do you have any further comments that you would like to add for the board at this time?
Not at this time, no.
I have no further questions for Mr. Van Arsdale. Does the board or any members of the public or parties have a question?
Mr. Brosman, do you have any questions? But before we do, Mr. Halligan, do you have any extra copies of that? Yeah, here we go. Yeah, you could, I have mine. Did the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions now.
I have none.
Mr. Brosman?
I have no questions.
Yes, do the parties have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Halligan?
We would next call Mr. Thomas Comitah.
Thomas, Thomas Comitah, C.O.M.I.T.T.A. We do.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Comitah.
Good evening, Mr. Halligan.
Mr. Comitah, where do you work?
I'm with Thomas Comitah Associates Incorporated, Town Planners, Landscape Architects, Westchester, PA.
And how long have you been in that position?
51 years.
And how long have you been a town planner and a landscape architect?
51 years.
And, Mr. Comitah, did you provide some
TCA, I'm sorry. Thomas Comitah Associates, 43 years. And then in previous employments, 51.
And have you previously been qualified as an expert as a town planner and landscape architect?
Yes.
And have you had an opportunity to review the conditional use application for 370 Lancaster Avenue?
Yes.
And have you had an opportunity to visit the property located at 370 Lancaster Avenue?
Yes, I initially visited the property on May 10, prior to submitting review comments on the conditional use application and sketch. And then I returned on September 28th of this year. I returned to look at the 31-inch diameter at breast height sycamore tree.
And did you do that on behalf of East Whiteland Township?
Yes.
And can you please explain to the board your assessment of the conditional use application for 370 Lancaster Avenue with respect to your experience as a town planner and landscape architect?
Yeah, so prepared review comments that I believe have been marked as exhibit. The original comments on the sketch plan, conditional use application, were dated May 15, 2024. After the applicant's revised plans, in turn, TCA did a review, updated July 18, 2024, and then further updated September 3, 2024, to which the applicant has prepared a response letter.
And if I could show you that final version, and I would ask to be marked as E2?
What was the final version date, September 3?
September 3, 2024.
Okay, I do believe that is T18 also.
Mr. Comit, I'm handing you, marked as.
Sorry, that we're all looking at the same thing?
Okay.
Mr. Comit, do you recognize E2?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay. And what is E2?
I'm sorry?
Is E2 your memorandum, finally dated September 3, 2024?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Could you please explain the comments as you deem to be important for the board at this time?
Sure. I'd like to summarize them.
Yes, please.
Comments pertain to the overall setting of the site, the importer. Ironically, I moved to this area in the summer of 1973, and I actually went that summer a couple of times to the importer, so I remember being inside this building many years ago. And I'm familiar with the site, you know, back in the day. The overview comment, you know, just pertained to the items that the applicant has already here before the board to present. This conditional use matter in particular, there was some discussion earlier by Mr. Dobson about the waiver subject to a detailed survey, and Megan Chomper's arborist report talked about after the leaves fall, getting on the site to do a more detailed analysis of existing vegetation. We looked at the landscaping provisions of the Sado and some of the tree protection fencing measures, addressed some of the pedestrian circulation and gathering areas, the fact that it was a historic resource. Rob Lewis from Kaplan Stewart did a response letter pertaining to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and mentioned the extent to which they were focused on addressing those. We talked about the proposed architecture, and there are exhibits as part of the packet that we reviewed. They've been refined and are subject to more refinement during the more detailed subdivision and land development plan review process. The East Whiteland Historical Commission has already addressed adaptive reuse aspect. And some of the items that we were talking about in the review having to do with details of the building, details of the site, architectural elevations, pedestrian amenities, streetscape features and so forth, were all commented on in the applicant's response letter by Inland, many of which said that they would address them in detail during the subdivision and land development plan approval process.
Now, with respect to your review, based upon your review and assessment, can you please explain whether the historic building can be rehabilitated?
I haven't been inside. I have been outside the building. I believe that it can be. And I know we've lost a lot in the last 50-ish years in the Route 30 corridor, so I think it's admirable that there is an attempt to do the adaptive reuse of the building.
And can you please explain your concerns, if any, regarding the conditional use application for 370 Lancaster Avenue with respect to your experience as a town planner and landscaper with regards to the trees, sycamore trees specifically?
Sure. So more recently, the applicant has agreed to take a notch out of the building to look at the tree in the southwest corner of the Rubino property, the one to the east. So I went back to the site on September 28th with a piece of equipment called a roll tape. Fortunately, if you go to the southwest corner of the Rubino property, there's no barrier or preventing access. And that sycamore tree is very close to the edge of it. And what I did was from the center of that 31-inch diameter at breast height sycamore tree, I then walked out with the roll tape, and I got to 32 feet 6 inches. And thereafter did an exhibit that I just handed to Mr. Halligan to illustrate what I found on September 28th.
You could just pause there before you explain the exhibit. I would ask if this exhibit marked as E3? I believe everyone has a copy of the exhibit. So, Mr. Comit, could you please explain Exhibit E3?
Sure. This exhibit is an 11 by 17 kind of overlay exhibit using a Google Earth aerial base on which I overlaid one of the sheets from the submission that shows the current configuration of building and parking. And it also shows some information on existing and proposed landscaping and vegetation. The tree in particular, which is top right or just off the southwest corner of that adjoining Rubino property, where I measured the 32 feet 6 inches. When you actually plot the canopy or drip line, it's shown with the green line that encircles the dark green image. So the dark green image in the top right is the outline of the tree that's shown in the most recent exhibit by the applicant. However, in my measurement, I determined that the actual canopy or drip line is as shown approximately. I mean, as I went in each cardinal direction with the roll tape, there were some points where the overhead vegetation might have been 3 or 6 inches. The circle approximates that 32-foot 6-inch radius that is reflected in the exhibit. So, as a result, I think what needs to happen is the applicant needs to take another look at the notch, the notch out of the building. Even though Megan Chomper's arborist report, the four-page report, has a number of very good measures to stay beyond the drip line, and she says on Page 2 of her report that for this tree, or these sycamore trees, the actual root system could go beyond the drip line. I don't know if it goes right to the drip line, the root system, 5% or 10% beyond the drip line or whatever. But based on what I do know, there are just corners of the are affected by my observations in the field. So what happens is in the site plan, that's where the driveway comes in to access the parking. So, and then there are some stairs, storage area and so forth. So it's kind of tight in there. Look at that a little more close. And Megan Chomper points out a number of measures in the event that there is activity within the drip line, but it was more like compaction as opposed to foundation walls or structures. So I think there needs to be some slight modification of that notch. I think the notch was a good measure, but it needs to be further notched. As Mr. Dobson just said, the tree southwest on the site, the 50-inch DBH sycamore tree, in the southwest corner, is in an area where a lot of building and parking and so forth is being proposed. That one is just south of the ruins that are there. I think it would be almost impossible to save that tree, especially because of the wet conditions that are around that tree. I think it just, it would have a dramatic effect on redesigning of the building. That one is more improbable. I think it's also a little bit more vulnerable. A question was asked earlier, what is the age, the age of the tree in the southwest? At 50-inch diameter at breast height is much older than the other tree in the northeast section. So, in any event, I think the applicant needs to look at that a little more closely.
Now, based upon your experience and empirical data, if there was not a larger notch, what impact could that possibly have on the less mature tree in this exhibit E3?
Sure. Well, before the 51 years of professional work, I worked 15 summers in the family landscape construction business, you know, in school and in college. Had a lot of experience with trees. In a natural setting, if you're going to add construction materials, hard surfaces, foundation walls, grading, what have you, trees that are existing in a natural environment, my experience is that unless there are measures to stay beyond the canopy drip line, seven to 10 years later, the tree might die. On the other hand, anyone that's driven from Atlantic City to Cape May and any of the shore towns, sycamore tree is the primary tree that you see in about 10 different shore towns that were planted simultaneous with the curbs and the sidewalks and buildings being built. And the place about which I'm most familiar, Cape May, you know, you see the roots of the trees buckling the sidewalks and knuckling up above grade. But they've somehow adapted to that environment because they had to live in a confined space. So in order to save the 31-inch tree, I think you just have to stay further away from it and follow all the measures that Megan Chomper outlined in the arborist report.
Now, if the board were, if the board were to consider approving the conditional use, are there any conditions as a town planner and landscape architect that you would recommend for the board to consider imposing on the conditional use?
I, yes. I assume that township will, if taking positive action for conditional use approval, would condition it on review letters of all the consulting groups and advisories from Star Commission. And then any of the responses that the applicant made, whether it was following the Secretary of Interior Standards, Mr. Lewis outlined in his letter, or any of the other promises or we will comply or we will provide more detail kind of provision. But I think the only other one is what I already mentioned, that more homework, study, evaluation of the corner of the building. Otherwise, my fear is that the sycamore tree is not going to last 10 years from now, 10 years after the building is built.
And just so that we make a more accurate record, can you just explain for the board and the parties present what a drip line is?
Oh, sure. The canopy thread, circle that's shown, would be the approximate drip line, plus or minus 6 inches. And most trees pretty much guarantee that the root system goes out that far. There are exceptions. There are trees that are deep rooted that do not have trees with the root system. And any of us who have seen a tree fall over by the roadside and you just see a very small root system? Know what I'm talking about. But for the sycamore tree, reasonably accurate representation is the drip line. And then just depending on the soil conditions and the soil moisture conditions and the regime within which it exists in the forest, it could extend a little bit further. But I think a fair assessment is don't disturb the roots within the drip line.
And just to make more accurate record, can you just explain for the board and the parties present what the tree protection zone would be?
So, good question. I think it would not only have to be shown on the landscape plan, it would have to be shown on the forthcoming erosion and sedimentation control plan. Because by the time a contractor gets on the site to do proposed landscaping, all the rough grading and site clearing and so forth is taking place. So pre-construction meeting, I'm sure the township engineer would be vigilant to have the tree protection fencing at the canopy line so that contractors are not going to bring equipment, vehicles within that.
And if there was no tree protection zone, the roots and the tree itself could be damaged, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Comit, do you have anything else to add with respect to your review of this conditional use plan for the township?
The only other item is, from my perspective, I believe that the adaptive reuse of this former importer stone barn is a great idea. I just think the township is going through its due diligence to carefully evaluate all the elements of it, relying on the advice of the different consultants. And in terms of getting a win-win solution with all the proposed site enhancements, landscaping, site features, signage, repurposing some of the stone repurposing some of the stone for monuments on, repurposing some of the stone from the ruins for pure fence material along the frontage. You know, they're all positive features to take what would be like, sorry to say, a kind of a an eyesore bladed derelict site and bring it back to life. The other items that might relate to Arrows Review or McMahon Review and so forth, I would defer as they're intermingled. You know, all items that the board has to consider. But overall, the good news is that ordinances allow this application to come forward in Section 258-J. That section obviously outlines standards and criteria for conditional use and in 258-K for the special exception. And I believe the applicant has given it their best shot to describe how they feel they are relating to that, those sections of the ordinance.
One further question, Mr. Committed. The testimony that you gave with regards to the 30-inch Sycamore Tree, did you memorialize your review and assessment in a memorandum originally dated September 30th, 2024, and then updated October 2nd, 2024?
Oh, yes, and the updated October 2nd, 2024. That's after I went to the site on September 28th to measure the spread of the canopy.
And I would ask that this exhibit marked E4, and copies for everyone. Committed, can you look at E4?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and this is one that is not a duplicate of a township exhibit.
Mr. Committed, the exhibit that I have handed you, Exhibit E4, is that your memorandum dated September 30th, 2024 and updated on October 2nd, 2024?
Oh, yes.
And that basically contains what you've already testified to, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I have no further questions from Mr. Committed this time.
Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any additional. The testimony is very thorough and comprehensive, so I'm good.
I have none.
I have, I have no further questions. Thanks, Tom.
And Mr. Brosman, any questions?
Canopies of a tree can be irregular as you go around the diameter, correct?
Correct, and they could be irregular because of the competition of other trees around it that might fade out or stunt the growth of a tree of an area.
And was it your observation that there's some irregularity?
In the southeast and southern portions, there is. So, as you go from the center of the 31-inch diameter breast height tree directly toward the Stone Barn and then directly toward the building on the Rubino site, the tree has more symmetry in that direction because there are not other large trees that compete for the sunlight. However, in the south, in the east, southeast direction, the canopy is a little bit lighter. It doesn't have as much branching and just a little bit more irregularity. So, it's more regular north and west and less regular east and south.
Thank you. You said you used a roll tape?
Yes.
That, those things with the wheel where you see people pushing it along the road?
Sure. Any difference is that most of the ones you see along the road just have a diameter of about six inches. This has a diameter of 24 inches, so it's fairly large. Easier to navigate.
Now, something like that wouldn't give a completely accurate measurement if the ground was totally level or instructions in the way.
Right. I had to duck, I had to do the limbo under a lot of vines and branches to get through. But that's why I say somebody should take another closer look at it and the applicant can go and stack down to the inch, mention it with survey crew or whatever.
So, yours may not be completely accurate.
I could be six inches off, but I'm not that far off.
Okay. And you said in your memo, you measured toward the barn building, the existing barn. So, you didn't measure toward the proposed building?
Right. I took representative sample in a northwestern direction. Then, because of all the underbrush and so forth, I got back to the center of the tree and then I walked in the other directions, you know, just to see if I was dealing with a circle or a rhombus or a polygon or whatever shape, but it was pretty much circular.
Okay. And isn't it true it's common to make trimming canopies of trees as part of the?
I don't usually do that. I guess it depends on the species.
But wouldn't an arborist come and somebody's property, they would, they would trim a tree that would be part of a?
Possibly. Depends on species and whether there's dead branches or?
Now, you mentioned the Rubino property. On your exhibit, tree is quite close to that property, correct?
Right.
And part of the canopy, as the applicant measured it and then as you estimated, it extends onto the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And isn't there paving under the canopy there on the Rubino property?
Yes. I would say there's about five to six feet of parking lot paving underneath the canopy in the, in the area that you just asked me about.
And would you agree that was most likely added after this tree had existed?
Don't know. I think it might have, but I don't know.
Given the size and the age of the tree, I think, agree with me, that's likely that that paving was added at a later date?
I would have to agree with you. When it was and what the tree canopy was when it was paved, I don't know.
That's all I have.
Any of the parties, any questions for Mr. Committed? Yes, go ahead.
Tom, I, one question comes up as you're discussing this. How, how much of that corner of that, of the parking area with that, would you think would make you feel comfortable for the tree to further survive?
It might only be one or two feet. It's really close.
One or two feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And?
Hi, thank you. Just a question.
Ma'am, you're gonna have to state your name.
Sorry. Gail Keys, 453 Lancaster Pike. I appreciate it. I think we all really want to see these trees saved. If the effort is made to save it, at this point, I assume when this grows in another 50 years, the canopy will be larger, the drip area will be expanded, and will the tree be able to survive, you know, as it gets bigger, even though it'll be more, the canopy will be more over the building and you understand what I'm trying to say?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I can't say for sure, but in Megan Shomper's arborist report, she has various measures, misting of the roots, tunneling underneath the roots, putting down certain mats should there be any kind of movement of construction equipment or vehicles. So, I think if the board was inclined to grant conditional use, there would have to be a very clear written condition on the, the measures that the township would, soon would take place, many of which are already outlined in the applicant's arborist report. And I think if they look at that relationship between that tree, canopy, and the proposed construction one more time and do a really detailed evaluation, Mr. Brosman seemed to think that maybe my technique with the roll tape wasn't as surveying-precise, which I would defer if somebody's out there with surveying equipment, two people with a tape and so forth. I just think they need to take one more look at it before the board says, oh, it's okay, it'll live forever.
I'm actually referring to 25 years from now.
Sure, sure.
After the tree has grown, canopy is larger. But now we have allowed building to be too close to that.
They might. Well, the applicant can decide whether they're going to rely long-term on Megan Shomper of Inland Design or get some renowned specialist in Sycamore Tree adaptive reuse. But I think for the purpose of the conditional use hearing, I raised the flag and the board will probably want the applicant to take another look at it.
If no other questions, Maria, just let me know if you need a break. Mr. Halligan?
Just one other witness. We have nothing further from Mr. Committed.
One other witness?
One other witness.
Okay.
I just have another witness. You're done.
Oh, I'm done, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. You have E2. Christopher Williams here?
Christopher Williams. Yes, I do.
May I put you? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Williams.
Hello.
Mr. Williams, where are you employed?
I'm employed by Bowman Consulting.
And how long have you been there for?
Complicated answer. Bowman since 2022 and with McMahon Associates since 1995.
And what is your position and occupation?
I'm a regional manager.
And do you have a specific professional designation?
I'm a traffic engineer.
And how long have you been a traffic engineer for?
Thirty-three years.
And have you been qualified before as a traffic engineer?
Yes, many times.
And have you had an opportunity to review the conditional use application for 370 Lancaster Avenue?
Yes.
And did you do that on behalf of East White Land Township?
Yes, I did.
And did you generate two letters in response to that application? One dated July 18th, 2024, and the other September 6th, 2024?
Yes.
They may have previously been marked by the township, but I'm gonna mark these as, leave them on E5 and E6.
What was the date of the second letter, Chris?
September 6th.
September 6th.
2024.
Oops. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, have you had opportunity to look at, I believe we're at E5 and E6?
Yes.
Those are your letters.
Yes, they are.
And with respect to your review of the conditional use application for 370 Lancaster Avenue, can you please explain to the board your assessment of the application and summarize what you stated in your letters?
Certainly. So, our review is really more of a preliminary review in nature as part of a conditional use application. However, we, we did begin to identify some comments that will normally be addressed during the land development phase, which is the next step in the process, should the project go forward. But as part of the conditional use review, we also strive to identify maybe bigger picture planning issues from a, from a traffic perspective. I can summarize some of the key comments that we arrived at through the course of our review. The first relates to the need for a traffic study. So, the development requires a traffic study. This has not yet been prepared. The applicant proposes to complete a traffic study during the land development process, which in this case, we're okay with. We're okay with deferring the traffic study to land development. The reason we are okay with deferring the traffic study to land development is because the development is a reuse of a historic structure and because it's really in the grand scheme of things, not a very large development. As such, the site is limited in size and also therefore limited in terms of the amount of traffic that it would generate and what we can expect relative to traffic operations. Also, another reason why it would be appropriate, in this case, to defer the traffic study to land development is because the site provides access, a single access to Route 30. Route 30 is a state road. And as such, the applicant is required to obtain a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. PennDOT will also require a traffic study. So, we are okay with having the applicant prepare a single traffic study that would be concurrently reviewed by the township and PennDOT through that review process, the land development review process and the PennDOT HOP review process. So, point being is we will have plenty of opportunity through the review process to review the traffic in more detail. Because we are now at conditional use and the next step, should it go forward, is land development. And because we would expect to receive a traffic study during land development, if the traffic study should show any issue relative to traffic operations, specifically at the access, then we will have to address that during land. PennDOT will also have to address that during their review. So, if, if it becomes necessary to modify the access in any way or if it becomes necessary to restrict the allowable movements at the access. The site plans do not show any trucks, trash trucks, delivery trucks, fire trucks, don't show any trucks traveling through the parking garage. Not sure that they need to, but we are simply identifying that as it relates to the site plan review and site circulation. So we're simply raising that comment for the township. Ultimately, with regard to the fire truck circulation, if there's a need to enter the garage, we would defer to the fire marshal. The applicant's engineer has indicated that there is an emergency accessway for a fire truck to pass through the lower portion of the garage on the eastern side, which they've indicated the, has been approved by the fire marshal. But we're simply raising the comment for verification by the township. And it's more relative to what is necessary from the perspective of proper firefighting. Another comment we had is with respect to the access site distance, which has been spoken to earlier this evening by the applicant. At this time, during this sort of preliminary conditional use review, we do believe the access site distance is sufficient, but it does need to be verified during land development and as part of the PennDOT HOP review. The applicant did just recently submit revised conditional use plans, which show sufficient site distance, and that would address our comments, our previous comments. But as of yet, we have not yet had the opportunity to verify the site distance as shown on the plans. So therefore, as a condition of approval, sort of related to my earlier suggestion of a condition, anything related to the access as a condition of approval during land development, subject also to the preparation of the traffic study, the site distances will need to be verified by the township and by PennDOT. And if any improvements are needed to provide safe site distance, then that must be addressed during land development and during the PennDOT review. And then just one more. Lastly, although not mentioned in our review letter, we have another comment that we would recommend as a condition of approval. And this is sort of in keeping with the planning work that has occurred thus far on the Route 30 corridor by the township. So we would recommend that this plan provide a cross-access easement to the neighboring properties on either side. The access easement could potentially be located on either end of the parking aisle in front of the building that runs parallel to Route 30, but the exact location can be determined later during land development. The easement would allow for a connection to the neighboring properties, not to provide the connection now, but if the neighboring properties were to ever redevelop, if something happens on those properties, it would be an opportune time to potentially stitch these properties together and provide a cross-access connection between the properties. The township has been striving to improve access management on the corridor, and if an access easement is set aside or planned for now, then perhaps the neighboring properties could complete that connection if they were ever to redevelop in the future. So it's really just simply preserving a future opportunity to provide that interconnected So the access easement connection would require additional engineering due to the grade differences that exist with adjacent properties. That would have to be determined later. That would be determined by the neighboring properties. If they were ever to redevelop, they would have to engineer their site. That would be the time to do so. Also, another benefit of a cross-access easement would be beneficial for emergency access, right? A site provides a single access, which is not uncommon, but a lot of the properties on Route 30 have a single access, limited frontage, but if a cross-access easement were provided, and if it were ever implemented in the future, it would provide for a secondary access for emergency purposes, and also potentially be a benefit for firefighting. I think those are the highlights of our remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. No further questions.
Do you have questions, Scott?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Chris, just a question for you. You and I have been on a last two years, a cross-country trip from Harrisburg to Westchester, meeting with representatives from the state, with DVR PC, with Deputy Director of PennDOT, in an attempt to improve the safety of the corridor of Route 30. And as Chris Yeager knows very well from all the statistics, one of the highest crash locations in Chester County, at least medium to above medium, is a location just west of Church Road, which is then within probably 500 feet from the entrance to this location. And the simple answer is, part of the problem is that as you're going west on Route 30, you are seeing a rise, there's a backup occurring on the backside of that Route 30 portion. So people come over too fast, and all of a sudden, there's a car parked there, and there's a crash. And you and I and a lot of other people are trying to work to improve the Route 30 corridor with what we're doing with our grants and the raised grants and stuff like that. But that's been a real focus of our energies for the last two years. With the proximity of that issue to the location of this particular property, are there, do you find that this is gonna add substantial issues to what we're trying to do just past Church Road? And if so, does that then cause us having to go through a revision of the Route Quarter, Route 30 corridor project that we've been working on?
So no, I don't believe this development triggers the need for a revision to our planning efforts for the Route 30 corridor. I think the plan that the township has established and is moving forward with is the right plan. I understand the condition you're describing, and it is driven by the, sort of the vertical alignment changes that exist along Route 30, especially as you move just west of this property. An existing condition, I don't believe that the development of this property and the traffic that it generates will significantly change that in any meaningful or even quantifiable way. A way that we can protect against an issue there is to provide sufficient site distance, which is why that has really been a common theme in our review and in the applicant's testimony, is to ensure that we have more than adequate site distance. That is the situation. We want to make it very clear that motorists entering or exiting this driveway have a clear line of sight before they choose to enter or exit the driveway, so that there is clear visibility to a potential backup that may exist just to the west of this location. So at this time, I don't believe that there's been sufficient documentation to expect that that condition will be made worse by this development. However, the traffic study will be forthcoming. We have specifically asked that that traffic study evaluate the intersection of Church Road and Route 30. So if there is any interaction from that intersection, feeling that exists at that intersection, how that may relate to the location of this driveway, our review of that traffic study will give us that opportunity to review that more closely.
Peter, before, I don't want to put words in Chief Yeager's mouth, but he and I have discussed, I think, the, just the whole Route 30 corridor, and I believe you have some concerns of additional traffic coming out of this location from a police standpoint, traffic standpoint.
Is Mr. Lambert calling a witness?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, then I guess at this point, I'm just trying to add to what, can I? I can't, I can't call a witness, so I'm out of order. I'm out of order.
But to your point, Mr. Lambert, your comments are well noted, and we'll have that opportunity to review that more closely with the preparation of a traffic impact study. We understand the issue.
Okay. And Chris, just because I'm taking notes real fast, you said you will ask, or you have asked them to evaluate Church Road and 30?
We have asked.
Have asked.
In our review letters, that.
Got it.
That is a recommended scope of the traffic study.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Chris, and that is, what is cross-accent, a cross-accent easement? I'm not sure if I understand that. Is that a driveway access across properties or an additional sidewalk?
No, in this case, I'm suggesting it would be a drive, a vehicle connection. An easement that would allow vehicle on one property to connect into the adjacent property, basically just, that could really looks past the property lines. As a motorist, it would connect the properties together, and adjacent properties would really operate one series of properties. But long way of saying, it's a vehicle connection between the properties.
Thank you.
Rich, any questions? No, okay. Any of the parties have any questions of Mr. Williams? Mr. Cochrane?
Glenn Cochrane. That's Glenn with two N's. Cochrane, you want to spell it? Thank you. My question, you brought up cross-easements, okay? My problem would, or my question, I would say, because it may be somebody else's problem. If you have a cross-easement, you got one neighbor that owns a property, he says, well, the truck's tearing up my driveway. Well, you gotta pay for it. Well, then it comes down to where both of them are gonna have to decide, they each gotta pay half or something, and maybe one person doesn't have any trucks. See, we got, there's a little problem with that, and I think that needs to be ironed out a little bit more. And when you start talking about and using somebody else's property. My property is my property. Your property is your property. I don't want somebody to tell me what.
So the recommended condition actually doesn't change your property. So the condition would just set up the ability for a cross-access connection on this property. In order to make it complete and actually connect the properties, you would have to agree to it on your property, and you haven't done so. So nothing would change with your property.
But the person that owns that property then would have to sell to the other person, and they could continue right on.
It would only, the actual physical connection of the adjacent properties would only happen if both property owners would agree to it, and that would be some point in the future, maybe never.
Okay.
But we're just, the recommended, recommended condition would basically allow for it on this property, but we've done nothing to complete the discussion with the adjacent properties.
I'm just concerned, not with myself, if it would put a burden on somebody, maybe in the future, and I'm looking at that.
Understood.
Thank you, and that's, I hope I made myself.
I apologize, George. Should I ask you if you had any questions? I think I skipped right over you.
No, but I didn't have.
Okay. I apologize.
I was good.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Halligan, did you wanna, I'm assuming you don't have any other witnesses?
I have no other witnesses. I would ask for the admission of our exhibits E1 through 6.
Yeah, and George, take a look at, oh my God, my eyesight's terrible. E6. I just want to make sure, because A7 was intentionally deleted?
Oh, yeah.
So I'm gonna indicate that we're not reviewing paragraph, the very, paragraph 1, the first paragraph of paragraph 1, because we didn't review.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just mark that out. Other than that, any objection?
No objections.
Okay. Parties have any objections?
None.
And then, at this time, Maria, do you need a break? All right, okay. Yeah, I'm getting rid of the, anything referencing A7, because they deleted it. At this time, I think we're now gonna go to the parties to allow you to make your comments to the board. And Mr. Cochrane, I think you said you had comments?
Yes.
And well, have you sworn in?
Can you raise your hand, please? Do you totally swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth is still up your hands? I do so. Okay.
Okay, you have my name? I actually have a little bit of a statement. I've been a lifelong resident of this township, and like I said, I'm three-quarters of the century now. And I'm gonna go right to the tree, because the tree, and both trees actually, have a long life expectancy still, if you'll continue to go, because I don't know how many trees we have in this township that'll compare to it in age-wise. I think we need to look at that a little bit. Are we gonna preserve something for the future? A fellow here earlier talked about conserving open space. I think that fits in with it, as part of it, part of history. I think we need more history. Now, the fire access and everything, I think we've run through that, and we've got that from the fire marshal, we just want to take care of all the fire access in this project. Okay? Water runoff. Like I said, I took a trip and went down, and I went into Tri-State Ribbit, and I looked at everything there on one side. I went down the other side, I was even in Mr. Rubino's driveway, went down the back, took a look to see what's going on.
I trespass.
But anyhow, the water, and I went down to Mr. DePaul's, and he's down with that pipe we talked, or he talked about, and the water is running down there constantly. It's like a creek. Now, if you
have a long life expectancy still, even though, because I don't know how many trees we have in this township that'll compare to it in age-wise. I think we need to look at that a little bit. Are we going to preserve something for the future? A fellow here earlier talked about serving open space. I think that fits in with it, as part of it, part of history. I think we need more history. Now, fire access and everything, I think we've run through that, we've got that in the fire marshal, we just want to take care of all the fire access in this project, okay? Water runoff. Like I said, I took a trip and went down, and I went into Tri-State Ribbit, and I looked at everything there on one side, I went down the other side, I was even in Mr. Rubino's driveway, went down the back, took a look to see what's going on. But anyhow, the water, and I went down to Mr. DePaul's, and he's down with that pipe we talked, or he talked about, and the water is running down there constantly, it's like a creek. Now, if you got more water coming with the rain, it's gonna really flood him out, he's gonna, there gonna be no end. Again, something needs to be considered on water retention, maybe make it a little bit more than what is actually called for. I think we need to look at that, because you've got a lot of impervious coverage here, and so the water gotta either be stored, we can see what happened in North Carolina and Florida with the hurricanes and all that, it's, it's terrible to have floods, and he's been flooded out several times now. And I like the idea of trying to One thing I gotta say, I said it earlier on, I said to the developer, he's trying to put 10-pound and a 5-pound bag, and it doesn't fit. I still think that he needs to scale it down a little bit and make a little room for saving the trees, or cutting down on some of the stormwater. And I believe what it is, it comes down to, he buys a piece of ground, he come from down the main line in Wayne, and he doesn't live here, but he comes up here and he likes it, and he wants to build this ice cream store. It may not fly, it could end up being a beer joint, beer parlor of another restaurant or something, I don't know, but you gotta have a parking for it, and whatever parking is there, that's all he can have, but he may need more. And I think what it is, the more apartments that he has here for sale or rent, whatever he does, I think that's greed, is, and I, it might not be the proper word, but it's, he wants more money out of it, and if you take, slice off a little less of that, take a little less, and then get the building done, if, if that's what he wants to do. But I don't agree with it the way it's been presented. I hope that all the little things can get worked out, and I think you have a fine board up there, and I think you all have good heads, and you know what you're doing, so it's all on your shoulders as to how you leave this township. I know when I was a supervisor, they said always leave it better than when you found it, and I see that you have the gonkow mill up there, on that new shield or post that you have up there. You wouldn't have the gonkow mill if it wasn't for me. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
George, any questions?
No.
Okay. The next we could go through is Jeff Ottler? And we'll have you sworn?
Jeff Oler?
I'm sorry, am I saying it wrong? I said, I wrote it down wrong. How do you spell your last name?
Jeff Oler, O-H-L-E-R.
I wrote it down, my handwriting's terrible, sorry.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes. I basically agree with everything Glenn said. I think it's a pretty good idea. It's excessive, very excessive, it would scale back a little bit. I think it would be a lot better to have that barn redone and everything, but I just think 55, 58, or here what the number is, is a little excessive.
No.
The next person I had on the list was Gary DePaul? Okay. Sean Ryan, who? Mr. Rubino? I think Mr. Rubino? No? And then, Mr. Keys?
Nothing else.
No. All right, we usually let's other people who have come out make comments. Are you okay with that? Yeah? Anybody else want to make comments? I went through the parties, come on up, just state your name.
Lisa Faulkner? Fine. I agree with everything everybody said so far. Some entrepreneurs are here, and at some point, I believe they would appreciate not having fender benders constantly outside of their places of business. We do, if you walk instead of drive, you realize there is a big problem, like Mr. Lambert said, debris all over the highway, and keep it short. Bottom line is, if he's bringing in proposed 55 apartments, that would mean a couple of hundred extra cars on the highway going in and out of businesses on any given day, and not to mention the poor cops have to pick up the dead dealer carcasses that the people are always And it just seems like it's, sometimes it's a big mess out there, and a hundred more cars seems unnecessary. Thank you.
Certainly, come on up.
Peter Spengeman, S-P-E-N-G-E-N-A-N, East Whiteland Township Historical Commission. I'm really here just for a procedural aspect regarding this hearing today. The, Mr. Lombardi has been before our commission twice, the second time we brought him to the historical consulting building, and the first time he agreed to make changes, the second time he came around, were more discussion about those changes, and we've never received any, we were expecting him to come back, and we've not had that happen, we've at least never received anything writing about what the final look would be. Some of these changes referred to what was mentioned earlier about reusing some of the stonework around related to the house in the back, which unfortunately could not be saved, but it's to be quite valuable township. You can overrule me in any way. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question?
What?
I didn't hear what you were
I was asking Zach if, if he knows further that we have gotten something back from the owner of the property. We have not received anything. We were expecting him to come back, but we have not received anything related to the final, final decision on our committee as far as making reference.
Zach, procedurally, can you explain what, where we are with the historic commission?
Sure. So I think the way it was left with the commission is that the applicant had made a number of the changes that were requested, reducing some of the embellishment, reusing some of the stone, et cetera. I believe the way it was left with the recommendation of the historic commission is that they would come back during the land development review process, but that the, the historic commission recommended to move forward with the plans, sort of the way they had been presented prior to that, right? Am I mistaken?
We're in favor of most of his plans. He agreed to make a modification to the second, to a major barn itself, but there are a few things that we talked about, but not, nothing was ever decided at that meeting. So it would be, be helpful to us if we could receive a statement of what his final plan was.
I can certainly provide the exhibits to you all. Yeah, I apologize if there was anything unclear, but my understanding, leaving that second meeting, was that everything was kind of good at the time, and that when, I would say, the formal review process of the historical commission was sort of triggered, I'll say, during the land development process, that those materials would be provided and, you know, further refined and reviewed at that time.
Well, that's fine. About when that would be, any idea?
I suppose it depends how this process plays out, likely, more like early next year, I would say.
Okay.
Before it comes in for any sort of formal submission in that regard.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Shea, and I own a business at 288 Lancaster Avenue.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
S-A-G-E?
I'm sitting here listening to this and realizing that I look, I look at things from a different perspective than a lot of other people, but what I see is that we have a very robust and desirable community where people want to come, but we have an opportunity here at this site to preserve a gem. It's like a little gem in the middle of all this busyness that's going on, that we could preserve to have a place for people to come and to have community. And, yes, fix the building and do something with that, but putting the apartments up, taking away all that green, green land, and you're just taking the air right out of it, and you're sucking out the air out of the, out of the community as far as I'm concerned. And I think that's a, that's a huge thing to consider, because we won't have that many trees, and it could be a gem, it could be a destination, it could be someplace where people will want to go, where you could have, you know, like a little amphitheater in the back where they could do concerts, and it's, it's, it's something special, and keeping it is something special, rather than making it just another block, block, block up on the wall or the third one.
Thank you, Ms. Shea.
I live at 451 Lancaster Avenue. It's F as in Frank, E-I-G-H-N-E-R. I do. I actually am very grateful for Ms. Shea, because I am thinking the same thing. When Mr. Phelps spoke of the open space initiative, I wondered why this isn't part of that, and I think he made some very good points about the open space and destruction of property, as did Ms. Shea. My problem is the destruction of the wildlife, of course, the trees, which many people are thinking about. Nobody has seemed to mention the light pollution at all. With the addition of the yards at 30 in Plainbrook, from my vantage point, especially when the ceiling is low on a dark, you know, on a stormy night, it's like it's 7 o'clock at night when it's 11 o'clock. The light pollution here is terrible. The air pollution, the air quality here is terrible, and I'm sorry, I don't care how many fixes these people think they have, this is not going to fix this traffic problem. There's so many accidents here, and it's, the site is terrible, people are driving up the center lane, you know, with every little thing, animals being hit, as Ms. Faulkner mentioned, and then there is the history of this building, the beautiful history of this building. Why can't we make this into something that our community can be proud of, instead of having people come here who don't live here and ruin our community? Let's make it into a nature center, a performance center, a science center, or something that's all three, a place where children can come to learn, where people can maybe have weddings, people can bring their kids to look at the trees, maybe have little plaques, birdhouses, and bat houses, something we can be proud of. And if you need to make the money on it, call it a 501(c)(3), the state has grants, feds have grants, probably the county has grants, heck, we'll even name it after these people if they want, but let's save what we have. You can make money on it by renting it out to different companies, renting it out for weddings, et cetera, et cetera. Let's save what we have. It's a beautiful barn, we don't need apartments, we don't need another ice cream shop, although you can put that in if you really want to. But no more apartments, we don't need them. Thank you.
I'd like to begin by saying, and I'm sure it was a different board, although I think at least one of you were here at the time, when the apartment project was approved at the bowling alley, and there were zoning changes, we were assured that there would be no more zoning changes for high density along Route 30, other than that district that they formed at that time. And that would, you know, you had to have minimum of four acres, and I think, I think it extended, not quite down to my place, but along there. And, you know, it was very definitive that we're not going to be approving any more high-density building or zoning changes along Route 30. That's the first thing. Secondly, along with the other wonderful people, I'm sitting here listening to Mr. Phelps' report, and looking at the diagram up there and thinking, well, at the time of the whole Route 30 stuff, they always talked about getting recreational opportunities along Route 30. You know, you're, you have more people now, you need open space, you need recreation. As far as I've seen, and I'm on the park board, the township hasn't taken any efforts to find open space, recreational opportunities along Route 30, and yet we keep adding more and more residents, and they include children. If you ever stop, follow a school bus, you'll know how many children live along there. There's nowhere now for these children to play, and yet, you know, proposing or thinking about it, offering more, you know, more units for more children, more, but no open space recreational opportunities. So I'm sitting here looking at this, listening to Mr. Phelps, I'm thinking, this is the kind of open space we need to acquire for the township. Maybe it could be a public-private, private-public partnership, store the barn, but that beautiful property in the back and the trees would make such a beautiful park, open space. Township has to have the will to do these kinds of things, and not just succumb to the developers who want to come in and, as was stated, make our homes into their money-making opportunities, and change the nature and culture of our, our homes.
Okay, we have one online, Carol Rapp, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, um, Carol Rapp, do I have to swear anything as I saw everybody raising their hand? I can't hear anything.
Here, here you go.
Hi, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I, and I had raised this at the last, I believe, at the last hearing we had too. My concern is the trees. The developer has had years to get to know that property and to know and identify that they had old trees that might be a problem for what he was planning. So I don't refuse that, you know, they've already made these plans, they've made some concessions, you know, they don't want to make more. My thought is, you've had all these years to know this was there, and just assumed that either we wouldn't ask about it, or that we would just approve cutting them down. I really don't want to cut those, I know you're trying to save one, but we should be saving both. The other concern I have is The other concern I have is, which I grew up with, many of these developments is the wildlife. We are just taking more and more land away from these poor animals that have nowhere to go. And I agree with a woman that said, you know, yeah, let's revitalize this barn, let's use it. It's a nice cream shop or it's, you know, a science center or whatever, but we don't need the apartments. It is going to ruin the view and it just adds more traffic, adds more stress to the schools. And we just keep approving apartments after apartments in this township. And it's, it is so disappointing to see it continuing to happen. Especially while we're trying to get this open space, I agree. You know, I know this guy's had this for years, but I just don't think we need to get the apartments. I still feel very strongly about that. Anyway, I just wanted to share that. And that was it. Thank you.
Else online? Kathleen, are you raising your hand? Okay, you're on mute, so you're going to need to unmute yourself.
Good. Can you hear me?
Sorry, sorry. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Dr. Schwerin?
Yes, you want to state your full name, please?
Sure. Kathleen Staufler.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please spell your last name.
S T A U F F E R. Good?
Yep.
Good. Okay. Um, I just, it was so potent to me when the A M E church and all that beautiful stuff that's going on over there, when you see the headstone of a soldier who served in our Civil War and knowing that these sycamore trees are of similar age, probably, and that they are witness trees, so much of the paling tree over in Valley Forge Park. For me, everything that Carol Rapp just said and Kathy Shea, that we don't need anymore residents in this township. We need an open space and that space is special. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for hearing me. I'm Steve Lawrence, 25 Church Road. Yeah, thanks for hearing me. Couple general things on the Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Just a couple general things on the project as a whole. And the last time I was here, it's been a while, and the project at the Speedy King was, the apartments there was on the docket. And I think it was Mr. Lambert at that time, and I guess you were speaking for the whole board, said that at this time, I can't approve the application. I don't know if that was because of traffic mainly or, I don't remember. But that ties into this project. Also, the Clues project. I don't know what the progress is on the Clues project. But if you start doing all the, who knows in the future if the one of the Speedy Kings is going to get built. It just, it's going to overwhelm the township, in my opinion. Again, another thing is the traffic that obviously I think what, something that we're leaving out here is all the pedestrian traffic. There's tons of people walking up and down. So if you're coming out of this proposed project, you have to make a left and there's a strip mall across the street where cars are coming out. Now you got to worry about pedestrians getting out on Route 30, making a left with a car that maybe just came out of that strip mall. Not a good situation. That's basically all I had to say. It just, it sounds like it's a train wreck waiting to happen. Be cool to save the barn, you know? We've all seen that for years and I didn't even know that church existed. So cool. Thank you for hearing me.
Anyone else? I'm sorry? Nobody online? Okay. Then at this time, I think we may be at the close of the hearing. Mr. Brosman, unless you had?
Can I just respond to some of the comments?
Yep.
This is not a zoning change. This property is Zoned FC Frontage Commercial and it has a Class 1 historic designation on it. This applicant is working within the township ordinances. Its use is permitted by conditional use. The FC Frontage Commercial District is not for open space. It allows a very large number of commercial uses on the property. And this property, of course, has this beautiful barn. It was the first thing mentioned when Mr. Lambert opened up the hearing. And we had acknowledged, understood that before my client bought the property, another owner tried to tear that barn down. The township denied that. My client has been working with the township for years to save that barn, to bring this great ice cream shop there. He explained his reasons. He told you the last time how, before he filed this application at the years, that he had worked with the township. He had significantly reduced the number of residences. And then even during this process, some smaller reductions were made. And at every turn, my client has worked with the township to address concerns where they could. Residents are specifically permitted by conditional use in connection with the rehabilitation of a historic building. And the ordinance says right in it, the reason that's allowed is, it is a way to preserve historic buildings like this. The best way to preserve historic building is for somebody to spend money fixing it up, putting it to an adaptive reuse, one that's permitted by the zoning. That will protect this building. And that's what the township ordinance was designed to do. And it will be working if the township approves this. And we will work with the township during land development to address the various issues. It's extensive that we will have to deal with. Mr. Dobson spoke to you extensively about the stormwater management concerns. The unrebutted testimony is that this project is not the cause of those problems and it will not worsen those problems. This project has, this property has no stormwater management on it and it will have a stormwater management system that will design, control the stormwater from this. Mr. Dobson testified that this project would not cause a negative impact on properties. It's the existing conditions that are. So we appreciate getting to work with the township all these years and all these months. And we hope that you will see fit to approve the project and we would look forward to working with you at land development if we can get to that phase. Thank you.
George, you raised a question that I would like to address is that under the ordinance, I don't believe the intent is to allow for this amount of density on this property. And under the ordinance, can you show us how you've met the criteria of this ordinance?
Yes, we did. We testified to every specific conditional use standard. There aren't many that the township has. We went through that code section 258. There were three or four requirements and we addressed them. Density is under the provisions of the FC Frontage Commercial District and that's not one of the standards for the conditional use. We have made applications to the zoning hearing board for that. We will be making out our case. That is permitted by special exception, a modification of the requirements. Show you meet the purposes there. So we will make that case to the zoning board. Density has been reduced. Some of the residents feel that it's a very large project, but it is, we believe, a reasonable-sized project for this. And one that isn't going to have detrimental impact. So yes, we will need that relief from the zoning board on the density, but that, because it's historic, it's not even a variance, it's a special exception. So it's kind of like the conditional use we're doing. And we do believe we have met the standards for the conditional use. We believe we will meet the standards for special exception. Talking further about density, you know, we pretty much have less impervious than is required. Heard from the township's own traffic engineer that although, he will review the traffic study, that he didn't see this as being a major traffic creator. So all those factors, I think, show that this is a reasonable density, as Mr. Lombardi had explained. I understand what the people are saying. It would be nice if someone would just come and save the barn and make the property a park. That has never happened. I don't see it happening. I think Mr. Lombardi is really giving a great opportunity for a reasonable balance to saving the barn. He's going to do the arid and buffer, the reforestation back there. It's a good and reasonable plan, but the township supervisors and the board will have to decide that.
Again, I think the intent of the ordinance is not to have the density that you're proposing at this point in time. And I'm, again, I'm not seeing that you're meeting the criteria of the ordinance.
I don't see, the ordinance has four specific standards. Testified as to all of them. There isn't one city standards. Point, I don't mean to argue as a technical
Unless it's something new. Yeah. In reference to what, Mr. Brosman?
It's not very long.
It's up to the board. I know.
We can't answer questions.
I'm not answering for this job.
For Mr. Brosman?
He's not a witness.
Yeah, we don't really normally ask questions, only of the witnesses, not the attorney. I know, yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Brosman, you completed your case, correct? You said at one point you may have rebuttal witnesses, but it sounds like no?
Sounds like no.
Yes, okay. And then, Mr. Halligan, you're finished putting on your case?
Yes.
Okay, and I think the parties had all made their comments. For the parties, I'm assuming you're not putting on any specific witnesses? If you are, raise your hand, other than yourselves. We got your testimony, okay? So seeing none, at this point, I think we can close this hearing. So what ends up happening is when the hearing is closed, the board has 45 days to render a decision. So they'll review all the exhibits, the testimony that was provided, and then they'll make a decision within that 45-day period. So with that, I want to thank the court reporter because I know it kept you longer than I think you thought. And while the court reporter wraps up, do we want to take a little break so she can wrap up?
Sure.
Take a one or two-minute break while the court reporter wraps up. Thank you.
Okay, if we can maybe reconvene at this point in time? Did we, did you, did you close the hearing?
I closed the hearing and we're back on to the regular agenda.
Okay, if we can settle into the next portion of the agenda, which is Section 5A. And John Neill, if you can talk about a couple projects you've got here.
Yes, we had the rebid for the traffic signal project on 401 and the low bid was Armor &amp; Sons Electric, $177,215.
Peter, is any of this grant-funded?
It's 100% grant-funded.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm.
Well, within
We don't make money off of it?
Give me a second, Scott. I would happily make a recommendation for that.
Top of the next page.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Armor &amp; Sons Electric for Traffic Signal Project for the price of $277,215.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. And now we have new competition for Mr. Jaeger in terms of selling vehicles. Get a load of these numbers.
There's no competition.
Yes, there is. You blew them away.
We had three trucks for sale. One was an F-750. That went for $34,300. We had two F-550s. Unit 321 went for $26,100. Unit 322 went $600.
Very good. I think we can approve that for sure.
Was it as expected or are these numbers higher, way higher?
I think we hit it at the right time. And we also did it on a Saturday, 5:00, so people had all day to look at it. There was
Oh, super.
That's great.
All right, I'll make my wish to approve the sale of trucks 322, 302, and 321.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes.
See how Chris did in his bids.
And then we have, we got a little Charger. How much you get for that?
$7,200. It didn't cost a lot when we bought it, so.
Did you keep the wheels? Engine?
It had over 100,000 miles on it, so we
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the 2018 Dodge Charger, vehicle number 4219.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey. At least it didn't cost us to get it off the property. And oh, boy. Moving on to planning and development, and we have Zach Marner with a few projects he would like to discuss with us.
Sure. So the first item here is consideration to amend a previously rendered decision. So the conditions of approval for the Gray Star Apartments as we develop in the Great Valley Corporate Center. The applicant has requested that we consider an amendment to the condition related to financial security to consider a A+ as opposed to A++ rated surety. This is for the financial security for the public improvements. I believe the applicant's counsel is here if there are any questions from the board.
I don't have any questions on it.
Same. I don't. I'm fine with A+ instead of A++.
I concur.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to I'm sorry, I lost my place there. Approve, yeah, approve amending approval, approve amending the approval resolution regarding bond rating for the required financial security for LD-05-2023 for the Gray Star Apartments in Great Valley Corporate Center. for the Gray Star Apartments in Great Valley Corporate Center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes.
The next two items are consideration of extension of time for the following applications. The first is for land development that was applied for in 2019. Set 32 Backton Hill Road. It's an additional parking and fueling area behind an existing building on the west side of Backton Hill Road. Shortly after the approval of that project, we experienced the COVID pandemic. That combined with sort of waiting on some of the sewer projects to proceed along Backton Hill Road, the applicant did not proceed with construction after that approval. They are coming up on the timeline for the five-year vesting period, so like grandfathering under the ordinances at that time, protection from changes subsequent to the approval. They're asking for an additional two years to be added on to that vesting period that would carry the project, the vesting period, rather, into November of 2026.
What is the project?
This is a property at 32 Backton. It's an existing sort of industrial flex-type building. They are, there's an existing parking area, but they are adding to the rear of the site, more of like a parking truck area, but also a fueling station at the rear of the property, sorry.
Okay, that's the McCadden property, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
I, I remember this application from one of my, on my days in the planning commission. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I don't think there's been any ordinance changes that would significantly, if at all, impact that. And I wouldn't think we'd envision major changes to those districts as part of our ongoing zoning analysis and amendment.
Straightforward.
Can, can I, can you? Make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the extension of time for LD-14-2019 for 32 Backton Hill Road until November 13, 2026.
Don, just clarifying, no, no comments, right? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're good on that one.
Next item is for the Si Temple Worship, the new worship center proposed on Plainbrook Road, the intersection of Plainbrook and Prospect. They are seeking an extension of time to render decision through January of next year. This would give them more time to revise, resubmit, receive review letters, and head back to the planning commission, seeking a recommendation.
Again, I, I don't have any questions on this, no public comments. You guys?
None.
Nope. Want to make a motion?
I would gladly make a motion to extend the time for the LD-06-2024, the Si Temple on Plainbrook, for the extension of time to render decision until January 31, 2025.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Extension passed. Okay, and moving on to zoning and code enforcement. I guess Zach, you'll take that, too?
I'll do my best. First item here is just consideration relative to sending those township solicitors, supporters, opposed, zoning hearing board applications. There are currently no active applications with the, what we heard this evening regarding the extension relative to 370 Lancaster, so there will be, should be no hearing this month. But no new applications to decide upon.
All right. And I believe, Greg, you're going to have some, some thoughts regarding Golf View Lane Parking?
Thank you. Just kind of recap. Is that better? All right. Just kind of recap what led us to tonight and where we are today. Couple months ago, there was some residents from Golf View Lane at the Board of Supervisors meeting, expressed some serious concerns on that street, parking, large gatherings, so on and so forth. The very next day after that meeting, myself and Assistant Fire Marshal Matthews, we went out on-site on Golf View. We did measure Golf View Lane, and it does not the width or cul-de-sac requirement at End Street with fire height. We continued to meet with other staff members, opposed an ordinance, libbit, street parking on Golf View Lane. That ordinance was discussed at the previous meeting, and it was not- At the end of the last meeting, the board instructed staff to continue to work through these issues. We've met on several occasions after that meeting. So one thing I would like to discuss that's in the code, another avenue for us to try, and it would be enacting a temporary fire lane on Golf View that we pilot to test how this is going to work. So I'll just read you from the code. Whenever the township fire marshal shall determine that the parking of motor vehicles upon any public street, lane, alley, or any private parking area included but not limited to commercial office and industrial complexes, apartment and multifamily residential streets, schools, institutions, et cetera, may interfere with the operation of the fire department or emergency vehicles or seriously hamper egress of occupants from a building in case of fire or emergency. Said street, lane, alley, or private parking area shall be designated as a fire lane. So this is something that can be done administratively, not through an ordinance, and we can use this as a pilot to test, because there is going to be other known areas within the township that have the same width restrictions. So rather than enacting the ordinance, we could institute a temporary fire lane on Golf View to achieve the same thing.
What's it involve? Painting the lines on the road, which say "Fire Lane, No Parking"?
No, it would be no lines, it would just be signage along Golf View.
Saying?
Uh, "Fire Lane, No," by the order of the fire marshal.
No parking?
Yes.
Okay. Fire Lane, No Parking, right. So it's another way to... It has to be just on one side of the street, right? Unless you're going to take up the whole street and call it a fire lane?
Yes.
Would that be, oh, yeah. We'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
That's the same end result. I have to think about it.
I, I, I think, I think the staff has kind of gone through a number of, of issues, and we, I'll, I'll talk, we ended up having a discussion about it today. It just seemed like this might be a good, again, a good pilot program to try to see how it works and kind of build on it or remove on it, or-
It'll depend, and then the signs go up. If we also have the police patrol and ticket people, that's when the questions will come. If it's just signage and nobody bothers anybody, and there's cars there parked, then so what? Right? So it's going to be up to you as to whether there's a response, right?
Technically, that's how it works with everything in the vehicle code or the crimes code. You know, obviously, there's a lot of things that we don't get involved in unless we're called there. So if that's the case, then that could be the case. So it could work out either way.
For now, the patrols are routinely going up Golf View and keeping an eye on it.
That's correct.
Right.
Yes.
And when you go up Golf View, do you notice people parking on the streets?
No.
Okay, so that's another way to keep cars from parking on the street, is just keep a police car, especially the pink one, I bet, which is highly noticeable.
Gets up there.
Okay. So I guess that's the choice, is continue patrolling or institute a temporary program? Yeah?
I think one of the things relative to the fire lane, the previous ordinance was just an outright prohibition, like you might see on Lancaster Avenue. So just, you cannot park here at any time, for any purpose, don't do it. What we've been looking at in the section that Chief Lewis was referring to is something that can be handled a little more administratively. It doesn't require the passing of an ordinance to authorize the sign. It can be done, again, a little more administratively. The concern, I think, that we keep circling back to, as we discuss at a staff level, is currently, there's nothing that precludes people from parking on the street there. We know that it's too narrow to, if cars are parked in the street, to safely get a vehicle all the way back, to set up outriggers if need be. So we don't mean to make an issue out of something that if it's going to, you know, the current issues or the previous issues have been, have subsided. But currently, there's nothing that we, no recourse we really have to say that a car cannot be parked there if there is an issue. So again, not something that I think the township would intend to actively patrol. But currently, aside from parking in front of a hydrant, there really is no recourse. Now, they might run a plate, ask the owner to come out and move their car, you know, pretty pleased. But without something like this, we have no enforcement mechanism. If there is, let's say, maybe it's not every time there's a car parked on the road, but if there's several cars parked on the road, or if there's a car parked right at the bend of a curve, those are times where there would be an issue, and there could be obstructions to emergency services personnel that would endanger the residents and our personnel as well. So we feel like there's something that needs to be done so we have some level of enforcement without being too onerous or too, you know, all over the place all the time. This is, we don't have a parking attendant, we don't have, you know, the type of enforcement you might see in other places, but it would be nice to have something in our back pocket if we do need to, you know, clear some cars out, call a tow company, God forbid, or at least ticket people to discourage that in the future.
If there is an emergency and a car is parked on one side of the street, is there enough room with just one car on the street for a fire engine or ambulance, either one or neither, to get by?
As long as it's parked appropriately-
Right.
We'll be able to get a fire truck there.
Right.
As discussed at the staff level, if it is a house fire back there, you have to set up a ladder.
Right.
At street end.
Sure.
Or on there.
Right. We don't have a ladder truck, but it would be for mutual aid. Right, yeah, sure, yeah.
The other thing, just to, yeah, like practically speaking, the concern is if they're parked in the carway, on the pavement. If they're parked in their grass, let's say along the side of the road, that's, that's really not an issue. That's not what, that's not what these signs or these types of enforcements would be for. It's really if there are people parked in the street, hanging out into the roadway, which would make it hard to get past.
In the case of an emergency where there is some degree of blockage, do we have the power or the authority to call a tow truck and say, "Get this car out of our way," or just push it out of the way?
We do. I mean, in the event of emergency, if it's a house fire or something- Car going. We have the ability that we will have to push the car out of the way. In the event a car is parked in front of a fire hydrant, I've seen it done before, you just break both windows, go through, whatever, and they have no recourse. Park with regardless.
Are there fire hydrants on that street?
There's one.
Okay. Is that sufficient to serve the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris, do the officers even have parking tickets in their cars?
Yes, absolutely.
Not a common thing issued, though, I would guess.
There, it's, we do get enough primarily in the shopping centers. That's where most of them are issued, but, you know, you get calls for handicap parking and things like that, so we're always prepared. And those are private property or public property, a handicap or a fire lane.
Again, I, I think, you know, there was a lot of discussion, and I was involved with that. That's why I'm kind of being quiet here. But we kicked around a lot of ideas, and it seemed as though that this would be a good step at this point in time, and monitor and see how it, how it evolves. You know? Again, it's, it's a quick, it's a quick situation where we can't, we don't need an ordinance for it, and we can reverse it and put something else in place if it doesn't seem to be working.
Signage along with a notice to every owner that if there is an emergency, we have the power to move your car forcefully? You know?
Good idea.
That'll get their attention. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like, I, I like that idea. Who said that?
Somebody said, "Your watch." "Your watch." That's a reasonable compromise to at least put them on notice. We're installing signs, and in the event there's parking there, we have the power and authority to move your car. Period.
Yeah, the way we left with the owners last month, the folks that came out, that if we were going to move forward with some sort of ordinance, we would provide notice to them. So we're not, this isn't an ordinance, we're not, you know, we're not recommending you adopt the ordinance we addressed before. So we should circle back with them, we had talked about this at a staff, but we would at least send them some sort of letter, and maybe there's some different things we could sprinkle in there. But again, this is something that we hope to not have to do, but it would be good to have an enforcement mechanism if we need it, and there is a situation that's, I would say, more egregious than just someone randomly parked in the front of their property along the road. Like, that's not really what the intent is here. It's, it's really to have something for more severe cases if need be.
Yeah. Doesn't need a vote, but, you know, just confirm, I, it has my, it has my backing. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. Rich, Peter, at this point?
I, I think it sounds fine, especially since it can be revoked. An ordinance is pretty ironclad and not easy to move.
I'm okay with letting them know that the fire department has made a decision to do this. With our blessing, okay, okay. You got it. It's already a long meeting, we know.
Nice punt. Okay, sounds good, thank you, everyone. And everyone, thank you for discussing it for the last two or three weeks. And now the complexity is, is a tough one. All right, so I don't think there's anything out for 7C, right, Zach? So we can pass through that. Public comment, anyone out there? There was, Donnie, you, there was an email, you're saying you can't pick up email, right? Okay, you're not. So is there any problem with me reading, on Donna's behalf, Bernadette?
Any problem with?
Reading a email that was sent in to us?
No.
Okay.
No what?
Is it just a public comment?
Yeah, a public comment.
Yeah, it's a public comment.
A pub, a public comment. All right, so. So I'll, I'll just read it into the, into the public record, whatever. But it's from Carla Zombelli. And it's, I read it verbatim here. Dear Supervisors, due to a scheduling conflict, I am unable to attend the meeting in person or by Zoom. It's very important to me that the opinion as a resident be on the record when it comes to the open space referendum on the ballot for this November. I feel very strongly in favor of it. I vote by mail, and earlier this week, I voted yes, and my vote has been received by the county along with the rest of my ballot. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to fund an open space like this and acquire a bubonic and historical piece of land like the Schiffer Farm, and to lay groundwork for the future here in East Whiteland Township, which includes maintenance and projects for existing parks and open space. A fellow resident accused me of being nimbly today. Everyone knows I live fairly close by to this piece of land. I make no mistake, I make no secret of that. I make no mistake, I make no secret of that. However, I know open space is not free, and as residents, we can't always hammer the township to do things and save things. We also, as residents, must do our part. I see a vote yes on this referendum as doing our part. I've done my research, and the tax that would be generated by the open space referendum is de minimis, is a de minimis burden. It comes out to about 45 cents per $1,000 earned on the earned income side. And on the other side, what is being asked for with the, and on the other side of what is being asked for with the, that is maybe an average of $90 per year based upon the common median asset assessment of the majority of properties in this township. That is around $200,000. That is a $7.50 a month. And my computer just went down. Okay, it's back up here. Depending on the value of your property, it will be a little more, or if your property is valued at a lesser amount, it will be less. Either way, it's not a gigantic burden. And even if the Schiffer property were not at my end of town where I live, I would vote yes, and I did vote yes. It has nothing to do with being nimbly. It's common sense, and I want it because it makes sense. It's preservation for the future. I urge all residents to vote yes on the referendum. If people vote no and don't take advantage of this opportunity, it will mean more development in a lot of places, not just the Schiffer Farm. Thank you, Carla Mudry. Okay.
Is the notice that's dictated by the statute?
A $600,000 fair market value property, what do you, what? It's only $90 a year. That's what your calculations came out from, in threes?
Mm-hmm.
We think people would focus on that. But, I don't know. Pretty much. Really, like, you don't have to. Fair market value is even less than 600. It would be half. $300,000, not then, but then, increase, so it would be $45 a year.
It's a good point. The way the FAQ is set up is it almost makes it read like if your house is worth $200,000, like fair market value. But, yeah, really, it would be more accurate to say if it's assessed this way, which it could be worth much more, like on the market. So that $200,000 number seems like it wouldn't apply to that many people, so to speak. But it really would. It would apply to much, far more than it appears, yeah. That's great, what you say.
So you're suggesting that we change the wording to calling it?
Or just make an equivalent, if you wanted to, $200,000 investment property, parentheses, equivalent to $590,000 fair market value.
We can't change the referendum, of course, but we could try to clarify that in the FAQ.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys, you don't have to, but.
I think as these questions come in from people, I think it makes sense for maybe to address maybe some of those on our material that we're posting for everyone. So it's a clear understanding and consistent answers out there, so, you know.
And that $200,000 number came from that being determined as the average or the mean?
Medium.
The mean, so there's an equal number higher, equal number lower?
It's the, it's the average assessed value in East Whiteland.
Okay. Consent agenda, the shortest ever. I'll read it. Questions, let me know. And here we go. Approve the meeting minutes from September 11, 2024. Ratify payment of bills for August and September in the amount of $995,993.20. And 9C is the treasurer report. Any questions or comments?
None.
If not, there are no other issues, then we are adjournment.
Motion to approve.
Oh, yes.
Consent agenda, that's right.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.